All right, if everyone would mute your cell phones, go ahead and turn your microphones on, please. Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, roll call, please.
Dan.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Sherry.
Here, and we do have a quorum present. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
I've none.
No. Item number four is approval of the agenda, and we do have a couple of changes. The claims from item six need to move down to item seven A because they are for the year 2022. So we will do those after the reorganization. We need to add item eight A, which is agreement for detention services between Minnehaha County Lutheran Social Services, South Dakota, and Yankton County. And then on the back, we are removing the Dallas Keller rezone here on the hearing section. Any other changes that need to be made?
Removing the what?
The Keller, Dallas Keller, the notifications were not sent out, there was no confirmation, so we need to get that on a different timeline.
Little approval with changes.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries five zero. All right, public comment, when any citizen care to make a public comment? No, just come up to the microphone, turn the microphone on here so everyone can hear your question, please. There, perfect, lights on.
I just had a question, will there be a public comment during the rezoning?
Yes, but there are hearings and there will be comment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, public comment is closed, we will move to item five, which is approval of the December 21st, 2021 minutes.
I have a change on two one five three eight H W Y, I'm the one who actually made that motion for the replacement.
That was two one five three eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion for the replacement for Stone Church Bridge.
And was the second correct?
Yes.
Any other changes?
Not giving Don credit for that. Just kidding. I'd move approval with the correction.
Second. So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Fox, to approve the corrected December 21st minutes for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries five zero. We also need to approve the December 28th minutes.
I'd move to approve those, December 28, 2021 minutes.
Second.
So motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve the December 28th minutes for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay.
Well, abstaining because I was.
Absent, okay, so we'll put that down as four zero, Kettering abstaining. All right, item number six, we have the December payroll to approve.
I'd move approval, second.
Motion by Healy, second by Kettering to approve the December payroll for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion carries five zero. In the holiday party, we chose to cancel, it was going to be this Friday, January 7th. But there were going to be several folks who were either going to miss it or choosing not to attend because of the COVID numbers in our community, so. There were some ideas thrown around about maybe doing something in the spring or something in the summer instead.
Picnic or. A picnic. Best way, you know, the kids could all come.
I think it'd be a good idea.
So we will probably not take any action on that tonight, but in the coming, I would say probably February, March timeframe, we probably do need to set a date for that.
Right.
Probably more in the March timeframe. So. All right, that takes care of item number six, all the old business, item number seven. Let's see, so on the top of your handout, there is a motion there that we need to make to essentially close out the year 2021.
So I'd move to adjourn, send, die.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So motion by Healy, second by Fox, to adjourn, send, die, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries, we are adjourned, send, die. And Patty has control of the meeting.
At this time, I would take nominations for chair. I move to nominate Joe Healy as chair and move the nomination seat.
I'll second.
It's a tie.
Yeah, we'll give it to you, Don.
Give it to Don.
All in favor say aye.
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 Get over here, Joe.
You didn't ask any opposed.
Oh, sorry. So it's too quick, because we didn't really have a motion for that, we should have a motion. Is that you said that as a motion?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
Now you can ask. Oh, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd take any motions for vice chair.
I nominate Sherry.
I second.
Domination by Kettering, second by Fox, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Not nation seats. Um, okay, now.
I'll get the claims done.
Yep, do we want to go claims, or do we need to go over the. Our assignments, that's like.
Yeah, that's later.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go back to items six, seven, eight for claims.
Will we rule with the claims?
I'll second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Los to approve claims, any discussion?
The only comment I did want to make is I remember last year, a citizen asked me what the payments to Kansas State Bank are for, and that's for our computer system. It seems like an odd place to send those funds, but that's where they handle them.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And we are on to eight A. Oh, sorry. Onto item eight, jail fees, Jim.
Or do we have to wait to the special hour of six twenty?
No, not hearing.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Keep my toes. Yes.
Jim.
I'm just here to bring this to your attention, it's totally up to you how you want to go, but as we all know. You look at your gas bills lately, everything is high, I, there's no way I can break out with public safety building as it's all together, I'm sure it's significant increase. Commission has the power to increase the cost for housing out of county prisoners and so forth, and right now, we're at eighty dollars per day, this is outside of our. Contract obligations.
How many dollars per day?
Eighty is what we're charging per day for, for out of county, that doesn't include our federal contracts with the US Marshal Service, Bureau of Indian Affairs, and Immigration and Customs Enforcement. They're pretty much guided by the contractual price, wherein, you know, you're like year number three of a four-year contract, so we can't move those around. Also, we can't move parolees for the state that's set by legislature where we can charge them, so, and that's eighty dollars a day right now. That'll stay there unless they change it. Counties around us, you know, you, you can go anywhere from eighty-five to ninety-five. I would, I would think that eighty-five would be appropriate increase if you choose to do that.
You don't have an estimated cost, what it costs per day to house.
You mean an actual cost?
Like an actual cost, do you have a.
What, what I always say is it costs us the same amount whether we have thirty prisoners or a hundred, because we have to pay staff, pay so many staff positions to staff the jail. The heating isn't going to change, we have to ensure the cooling, so that's just.
Food really is.
The food is, is, yeah, and that's, you know, we're in a contract.
What is that?
You know, I think it depends on numbers, the higher the numbers, the lower the food cost is, so, you know, we're. Worst case scenario, we're below three dollars a day.
So it's pretty. And you said surrounding county between eighty-five and ninety-five?
Shouldn't say surrounding counties, surrounding counties don't have.
They don't have jails.
Right, and when they do, they, you know, they can house fourteen or fifteen, they're like Lake County, they're at seventy-five dollars, Pennington is eighty-five. Davison, they've been at ninety-five for a couple of years, but they don't house the numbers of outside that we do, so.
Be just over five percent increase if we look at the next agenda item, gives about a five point two percent increase for juvenile.
I know.
Kind of right in there.
Received these numbers yet, but the end of the year, the. Jail income was about one and a quarter million dollars, that's how we ended up, so we're, we're up. Forty thousand from last year.
We're at eighty, and we need to go up, I guess, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, maybe we go to ninety, we don't know what food prices are, are going to do, they could, they could go up substantially as well. I'd rather, I'd rather not lose money on a jail contract.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're losing money on the jail, it sounds like we're a quarter million above.
But we, we can increase later, too.
Yeah, you can increase that at, at any time, it just takes a vote of the commission to do.
And you just need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would move to increase jail fees to eighty-five dollars, second.
Motion by Lo, second by Fox, increase jail fees from eighty dollars to eighty-five dollars, any discussion?
I would say if, if prices continue to escalate like they have over the last three months, we can certainly revisit mid-year.
Yeah, our food service contract has not increased, it will increase by CPI, that's part of the contract, so we can expect, you know, at the end of November, a seven point one percent, so. I guess it's going to be around that or worse.
Does, do your food service people do a nutritional thing?
Yeah, they're, they're one of the largest in the Midwest.
I mean, do they provide it to you, saying, you know, this meal is this?
Yeah, yeah, every, everything is. In. Black and white, so many calories per day, now how those calories come, we're not eating, you know, or star cuisine, but it's nutritious, and I think it's right, right around three thousand calories a day, and that's.
Okay, motion to increase to eighty-five dollars, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
I wouldn't recommend it for reservations or anything.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, and now on to item eight A. So we've got a contract here for juvenile detention center in Minnehaha.
That's just a year.
Yep, annual contract, I think it's pretty much the same as what we've had, although we are seeing a slight increase, two hundred fifty-seven dollars per night, per bed.
I believe it was two fifty, was it not?
Those, two thirty-seven, what?
Five point two percent less than two fifty-seven. Comma instead of a decimal, yeah, I think it's like two thirty-five, if I remember. Otherwise, from what I could tell, it's about the same, and I don't know, we have a lot of choice somewhere.
We do not.
What we do with the matter, so with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the increase in the.
Of the agreement?
Agreement with. Action Center.
I guess I would second Don's motion to. Approve the agreement for the detention facility with Minnehaha County Lutheran Social Services of Lincoln County.
Have motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. We've got about nine minute, eleven minutes before we can move on to the rezone applications.
Can we do the floodplain acknowledgement?
Yep, if we can go on to the item ten, please.
So FEMA kind of threw us for a loop, we've got the proposed floodplain map, and they've always said use best available information, best information. Even had an email included in the packet where they addressed it and said, yes, you're correct, and then another issue came up, and a different person from FEMA said, well, you don't have to. So in the zones that are in the proposed AE, which means lowest floor needs to be one foot above base flood elevation, we had a conference call with FEMA, several individuals, and. They gave us several options, one was a waiver, so we met with Rob, the director and I did, and decided the waiver was the best way to go, and would you like me to read it into the record?
Please.
Sure. Says building permit floodplain acknowledgement, and so if somebody's going to apply for a building permit in a plate, place that's going to go into the AE zone, they'll have to sign this, it says. I acknowledge that I have been informed by the Yankton County Planning and Zoning Floodplain Administrator that the property listed on my building permit application may be affected negatively by the proposed FEMA flood map. These changes may result in, but not limited to, bank-required flood insurance, inability to file flood damage claims, inability to restore the property due to disaster, and/or FEMA request to make the property compliant. I also acknowledge the county bears no responsibility for any future issues related to the floodplain, if I decide to move forward with the project, they will have, sign it and have it notarized, and then we'll attach it to their building permit. And this is only for zone AE, not for floodway, floodway, they'll still be required to provide a no-rise certificate.
Okay.
Well.
Dan, Dan, be mindful of your micro floodplain development permit. Are they going to need that for AE?
Yes. When, when it's adopted.
When it's adopted, so this is just saying, if I want to build a house now, knowing the map is going to be changed, I just acknowledge that.
And that's.
I'm aware of the change, but I'm going to.
Do it anyway.
And that's exactly why we did it, because we have somebody that bought a lot and got everything ready, and then found out they're going to be in AE, and then they contacted FEMA, and FEMA gave them a different answer than they've given everybody else. And so this is letting them know, hey, you've been told you're going to be in the AE, and so there could be issues in the future, and you're taking all the responsibility. So we would just like approval to use, use this and add it to the building permits.
I don't see any issues with it myself, has anybody else have comments or concerns?
No.
The state's attorney has approved.
Okay. So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Do we have to have a motion for that?
I would move to approve the building permit floodplain acknowledgement. Form, which in the event that somebody wants to build, that, that will be attached to their building permit.
I'll second.
Motion by Fox, second by Los to adopt the building permit floodplain acknowledgement, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Six more minutes, let's move to the committee assignments.
So I did notice. What's in the, excuse me, what's in the packet, the Yankton, at the very bottom, the conservation district, that should be Joe, he's been filling that role for 2021, so that should be Joe, and since he is now chair. The assignments associated with Paul need to transfer to Joe, so that would be the emergency contact. Emergency management liaison. And somewhere nine one one. So those three, and since he's taken those, I will take off his plate the safety center and joint powers. To try and even that back up a little bit.
Uh, what? Or the nine one one you said?
Nine one one, yep, so it would be Joe and Wanda on nine one one.
The joint powers, the joint powers one, in my opinion, should probably stay with Joe, because that's the, the garbage, the trash disposal with the city of Yankton. Generally, from what I was told, they like to have somebody who resides in the city on that board, but.
Well, they have city, and then they have county, county representative, too, as a citizen, they have a city, city citizen and a county citizen rep, too, so I, I don't believe that'll be an issue.
Okay, um. The E nine one is Joe and Wanda, emergency contact Joe. Emergency management liaison is Joe instead of Sherry.
Yes.
And then safety center committee is Sherry instead of Joe.
Yes.
And the conservation district is Joe.
Correct.
Joint.
And then did you get the joint powers committee?
Oh, that should be Sherry.
Okay, perfect. So I move to adopt those committees assignments for 2022, second.
Motion by Lo, second by Fox, to adopt the 2022 committee assignments with the changes discussed, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Then we need voting centers.
Newspapers, well, I guess it doesn't matter.
You wanted first, or the?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Uh, so voting centers, we currently have City Hall, Yankton Fire Station Two, Gayville Community Center, Mayfield Store, Leesterville Fire Hall, Lewis and Clark Recreation Area.
Move to adopt the proposed voting centers.
Second.
Motion by Lo, second by Fox, to adopt said voting centers, any further discussion?
Yes. With the voided voting centers, it makes it. Virtually impossible for a party affiliation to be verified in the voting process.
I guess I'm not sure what you.
When you can go to any one of those centers and vote, how can, how can Republican Party or the Democratic Party have somebody there to monitor the voting process? Because they don't know, they don't have a list of voters in that precinct as it used to be, it used to be precincts, right, now it's voting centers.
I think, I think they can still have.
They can have people sitting there, but they can't verify anything, because they don't know whether the guy that's voting is a county citizen, how would they know? What would they have to verify?
What did they have to verify before?
Well, they have to show their driver's license.
You can only vote in your precinct, so you can get a list of people in your precinct that, that votes.
Right.
Now, the majority, as I understand, majority of the counties in the state are on the precinct process.
Yeah, I think there's seven vote centers.
Voting center, seven. So I just, I just want people to be aware that that is a challenge that, that. Has been. Out there.
Well, you can still run a, the individual journals that are registered to vote, they are still registered at that precinct, so there is a list that can be run.
But if they go to another voting center, how are they going to identify that they were on that, in that precinct?
There's a list there.
At all.
There's a full list.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county, I have to, since, um, I think it was a couple of years ago, all vote centers have to have copies of a full.
Full.
Everybody.
Yep.
That wasn't, that wasn't explained to me, so thank you.
So you have to, so let's say you have this book, and you just page through it, and you go, okay, there's Don Kettering, check.
No, because we have the poll books now, so they, all they need is, we can look up their name, but if for some reason those poll books went down, we can look at the registration list and say, okay, Don.
So if I go in to vote at voting center one and vote, they'll mark that off, then I drive down the road and I go to voting. How, how is that going to be stopped?
Because it, the, all the vote, all the.
Electronic.
Are all hooked together, so if you go down to another vote center, it'll say that you voted.
Okay.
So no, we, you can't vote twice.
Good.
Can, can you tell, because it's electronic, how many voted independent, how many voted Republican, and how many voted Democrat, or no?
I think there, there's a list. You know, that we can run after, you know, the elections are done that weekend.
Okay.
Who voted Republican or Democrat or independent.
With that, I'm going to move forward with the vote, all those in favor of the voting center, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Okay, and now we need newspapers. You have, okay, you do, okay.
Do we need to name two of those, they're not in our, the Yankton Press and Deco, and then the Yankton County Observer?
That's, yep, just one motion for each one, just.
Together.
Yeah.
So I, I move to adopt the Yankton County Press and Deco, and the Yankton County Observer as our official newspapers.
Second.
Motion by Lo, second by Kettering to adopt Yankton Press and Deco, and the Yankton County Observer for official publications, all those, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Okay, that should conclude item eleven, and time being six thirty, we will. Move to item nine, RT. Move to item nine, RT rezone applications. And this will be a hearing, so that we will take public comment on each application. So first, um, the list is Mr. Ryan Heine. Should be the first page in that packet, well, not the first page, but. Second page in that packet. So with this one, uh, looks like planning and zoning did pass this with a three to two vote. Just, I'm gonna back up just a hair, we, we had identified some properties within RT that. Long term, we'd like to, to reevaluate our, our RT zone and get, essentially get rid of it, but put people into. The zones that their property is either currently being used at or where the neighborhood fits. And so we had several applicants come forward. So Mr. Heine is off of Deer Boulevard on Alpines Road. I can't. Okay, right on the cursor.
I zoomed out so you could see where.
Okay, yep, thank you. Is there any thoughts on this particular property?
Should we have him present his case first and then?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you wanna come forward at all or say anything?
Then you lean back.
I'll switch you, I'll switch your microphone.
Come on forward if you, if you wanna.
Yeah, sure, I'm Ryan Heine and I live there on that property. We have our small family farm growing hops as well as the rest of properties currently growing corn and soybeans back forth, but. Someday I hope to have it all in hops. And that's our intentions is to build our specialty farm there.
So it's currently RT, you're proposing to put, uh, change it to agriculture?
Yes.
And the property that's adjacent to you to the. West, is that ag too?
That is Lakeside Commercial.
I'm sorry?
That is Lakeside Commercial.
To the east.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, I had the directions backwards.
That way.
Yes, the west is a federal property.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's federal property, that's the fish hatchery. So all the green there is not, will, won't be developed, uh, won't have access through there. Um, on the north west corner there, there is an eagle's nest on our property as well, that also limits development along the north edge there to the east. Along, along there in that corner, so due to federal rules.
Not intending to put in a small feedlot, are you?
No, there's been. There is no CAFO going here despite what people have said.
Why go from ag, RT to ag? You can do everything you wanna do as RT, I guess.
We would like to do, we would like to also do agritourism. Agritourism involves events, allowing the public onto the property to really experience the hop farming operation. That has come under some scrutiny by people and we would like to hopefully. Do that again without having any issues.
What, what issues are you running into with it zoned?
I think you know.
No, I actually don't, that's what I'm asking. Because it, I'm looking in. You know, it's a permitted use in RT is agriculture. You know, and you have, you have a home based business as an option there too, I guess I just. Trying to understand the why.
If FSMA rules change, we may have to get a food manufacturing license in the future. Food manufacturing or light manufacturing is not allowed in RT, that would be a problem. I'm sure you have made many comments before about a bar that's not allowed in RT. We'd just like to end that for once and maybe in agriculture where bars are allowed. As well as events are kind of a questionable area too, and that's clearly spelled out in agriculture that we can have events.
More questions for the applicant? Great, with that I'll have him sit down.
Thank you.
Please. So for public comment, we, we will limit the time on this, just to keep things moving. But I will open it up to three minutes, I will open it up to public comment at this time, does anybody like to?
Three minutes per each, no, three minutes total.
Per, for citizen comment. Come on forward.
Hi, my name's Matt Evans. I am not opposed to Ryan having a bar or events, stuff like that. Ag does kinda scare me a little bit, I know Ryan has said that he doesn't. Propose to do certain things, like I've tried to read as much as I can up on the ag and what's allowed in there, it's kinda confusing to me. As far as like cattle, like what you can have there for cattle. Stuff like that, spreading manure was one of my concerns, I. I'd like that clarified, I guess, what exactly he can do on there, if it is ag, if it does get rezoned to that.
Well, I believe he said he's gonna grow hops.
What's that?
Said I believe he said he's going to grow hops.
I agree.
And not have a CAFO, cause I specifically asked him if he was gonna have animals.
I agree, um, I just wanna know, so you can't have, like, if this does get rezoned ag, can he still have cows there or spread manure? Do you know?
Yes.
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 Okay, so that's one of the things that scared me, I guess. One of the things that it did say in the zoning as far as the. See here, sorry, I'm gonna try and. Okay, so it said like the intent of the rural transitional districts. Was to make sure like growth of corridors from unstructured or. Incompatible land uses. I think this is incompatible to me, I mean, the next ag is several miles away from here to put ag in the middle of, you know, R two and Lakeside. I don't, I think is incompatible, the definition of incompatible is unable to live together harmoniously. There's a huge housing development coming in to the south that borders his property from the Christiansons. And I own the three pieces of property on the west side, it doesn't show that on there.
The pink?
Yeah, the pink. I border the entire east side of his property over there. That's basically it, I guess, I just think it's incompatible and I feel that. I understand that Ryan has a right to do what he wants to do on his property, but I've spent millions of dollars building my RV parks. That used to be Heine's property right next to it, and if this changes, I believe it's gonna hurt my business. With animals or spreading manure or whatever is allowed, I understand what he says that he's gonna do, but what he can do. You know, if, if he sells it or passes away, I mean, this opens a big door. Um, and I don't think it should fit, but that, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments on this application? One sec. Okay, with that, I'll close public comment. I'll give you an opportunity to come up and address anything.
Okay, I wanna clarify again, no CAFOs, this is, you can't, by the ag law, you can't even put a CAFO there, the property is way too small. Forty-two percent of my border is either federal property or not developable due to federal rules around having an eagle's nest on it. In addition. I do believe your website very clearly shows in its pictures of how my farm is benefiting and how nice it is to have a farm next to your business. As for residential, there's multiple cases in the county where residential is right up next to ag land, it seems to be something of a. A desire to be next to nice farms, you know, not CAFOs, this is a hop farm. So I don't see how that argument that it's not compatible, it's not long, directly along the corridors, you have a corridor of Deer Boulevard, sort of. But the major highway is definitely a corridor, this is offset from all the corners, we're kind of really landlocked out there. And which also creates a lot of issues with access to the property. Lastly, as for manure, if you don't zone me as ag and you leave me as RT, I can still have cattle and I can still spread manure. Cause that's allowed in RT as well. Which I don't.
Any further discussion up board?
Where's the closest? Other piece of ag? How far away is that on the board?
One point two miles to the east.
To the east. Could you zoom out?
If you zoom out, you can see it, it's right over there.
Now, that's, that's not zoned ag, sure, that's, that's in the city ETJ.
Oh, gotcha.
Why don't you, why don't you scroll out? Why don't you scroll out so we can see it, Bill? So, you know, part of zoning, in my opinion, is to place things where they belong, I mean, zoning and planning. And part of it is you have to plan for, you know, future development and we've seen a huge amount of growth in the lake area. To me, looking at that and, you know, those properties way up there, that's the closest ag zoned property. I don't know if it makes sense to put one ag piece in the middle of all the residential. We wouldn't wanna go out into an ag area and put one piece of residential property in the middle of ag. You know, we wouldn't wanna do that, would we? So we probably shouldn't do something like that here. I know Mr. Heine said that he, he doesn't plan on doing CAFOs, but the fact of the matter is our zoning would allow him. If he, if this goes through and he decides to do it, he could put. You know, uh, anything under two hundred animal units is a permitted use. And so that's, that's almost five hundred feeder pigs, six thousand turkeys, eleven, or six thousand chickens, eleven thousand turkeys. And it would be permitted to do, and I just don't think that that is the right area to do something like that in.
I guess I have a question of Mr. Heine that I didn't think of before. How long have you been growing hops out there? It's been quite a while, hasn't it?
We started growing hops out there in two thousand fourteen. And it's a, it's a hop growing, hopping is not a. Not an overnight business, it's a, it's one of those businesses as they describe.
Like grapes.
Like grapes, it's a generational type farm, most hop farms are many generations old.
And were you there first or was Mr. Evans and his campground there first?
I've owned that property for my, almost my entire life.
So I guess that would mean you were the first.
Yes. Um, as for CAFOs, what is the setback, Mr. Clemish?
Fifty feet from a two hundred, from what size?
No, what is the setback for a CAFO?
What size? Two hundred animal units or less is fifty foot. In our zoning ordinance, the way it sits right.
Oh, oh, I still don't have any intention of having a CAFO because I intend to live on that property.
It is fifty foot, I will note that when you get into, you know, poultry barns and things of that nature, that if. If they're a barn and thermostatically controlled, that that's a CUP. Now, if they're free range. Any, any livestock under two hundred animal units would be allowable.
I guess if, I would prefer living by a hops farm, which would be fairly quiet, I would think, versus. A lot of other things.
Additionally, yes, we do have livestock, we do have twelve chickens, um, we have thought about getting a goat, so, you know. Yeah, we want to have a small specialty farm that it does involve a few livestock, so.
Okay, thank you, I'll ask you to sit down, we'll bring it back to discussion here, I think we need to limit the discussion to things of. You know, put future development for that area or that property, you know, what, what Mr. Heine is doing or wants to do or. Future owner may do is, is a small portion of discussion, I think. We need to look at the intent of what we're doing. We're sending these letters out and asking people if they wanna rezone and it, one of the intents is what the property is being used as. The other intent is we have to, you know, take into account what's going on around them as well, so try to limit that discussion to those topics.
And, and the future too, and, and then what the potential for that property comes, and it's not just, you know, hogs that, and. You know, unregulated, rated manure applications, but it also opens it up to the potential, a junkyard could go there, landfills. Municipal, commercial sewage disposal, that's number twenty five.
And maybe he'll win the lottery and move away.
And all of those are allowed in this property if the rezone goes through, and, and I'm gonna read something out of our comprehensive plan. Uh, and it says Yankton County's role in influence development must be guided by the phrase, in the best interest of the public. And not that of individuals or select group, I'm gonna read that again, in the best interest of the public. It's important to concentrate on the whole prior to moving forward with additional planning documents and include a future land use, what the future of that area is twenty years from now. So, I think that's important.
Well, as RT, can't he have a hops farm?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with him staying as RT, but I don't think, he, there's nothing that he can't do now. In RT that he could do, and I, I'm not, I'm, I'm fine with him staying, have no issues with that, but I'm not worried about going to agriculture. It matter.
I, Dan, I, 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 this may be just an opinion, so I'm gonna express it as an opinion. But my guess of it is, is that if, if we polled the citizens of Yankton County, they would be. Far more in favor of having a, a hops farm on that property than they would having another two thousand campers.
We can't have a campground in RT as it is now, it's not allowed.
They're coming right up to the edge.
But we're not talking about the, the property next door, we're talking about this one and what's allowed in the zoning.
Well, then that makes it even easier for me, these guys have owned this land for several generations, they've been farmers all the time, I've known the family and I've known. Most of the family for over forty years and. Because they're a mile and a half from another farm, to me, doesn't make sense, it has something to do with personal property rights and.
Well, I think there should be rights to the hundreds and hundreds of surrounding property owners as well.
Well, there aren't hundreds, there's only two, the state, the federal government, and then. The campers.
Not even the campers, Mr. Evans.
Well, we're not voting tonight, so this is just a first hearing, we'll have two more weeks to give it some thought.
Great. With that, we will move on to Doug Markort property.
Some of the people couldn't be here, so some of these are pretty simple to explain too, so I'll just take care of it if that's all right. So it's the commercial one, right? So he already rezoned this piece to commercial that last year. He's just asking that this be rezoned to commercial also because it's also being used in conjunction with this. In fact, this driveway is right here. So he's just, this should, this should be red beacon. This is not updated yet. He's just asking for this to be switched to commercial also.
That, does anybody in the audience care to make public comment on Mr. Markcourt's application to zone that lot to commercial? Give you three minutes?
Just a really quick question. What is directly west of that property, of, of those properties there that are zoned commercial?
Is there any other, anybody else care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the board for any discussion.
Makes sense to make it all commercial.
That was my only question was why isn't the other lot commercial? And it is. I forgot we did that.
Okay. Again, this, this is going to be the first reading of these ordinance changes. And so we'll go through these. Uh, it'll be at the next meeting that we actually take vote on this. So next property is owned by Delmar Nelson. And I should note all of these past, uh, planning and zoning.
This is the property where the cursor is, and he's zoned, dual zoned RT and ag. And so he's asking just to rezone R2 right along Highway 81. Housing development right here.
That's where we had all those variances.
Which housing development is that?
I guess it's not a development. There's, there's houses right there.
So he's looking at the whole 160 acres.
One acre lots.
That's, isn't that a four, that's a, a one, one six, four section.
It's 45, sorry. Box is off.
Okay, would anybody care to make public comment on this parcel? Come on forward, sir. State your name for the record.
Doug Jones. I own the property just to the north of that. And I'm just curious where the driveway is going to be if.
That might be a bill.
They're going to make this commercial. If you wanted to make that a commercial.
What he's looking at doing is making it R2, which would be rural residential.
Okay. And where is this proposed driveway going to be?
He doesn't have one yet because he's not planning to develop it.
Just yet.
In the future, he's going to have to work something out if he wants to develop it into housing. All we're doing is changing the zoning. So he has no immediate plans to develop it.
Well, see, they're going to make that four lane out there. And I've already visited with him. And he's planning on adding on my driveway is what he wants. That's the only way he could get a driveway there.
Where's your driveway?
It's just right exactly to the north of that red fence line there.
It's right where the number, right below the numbers.
That skinnier lot.
Yeah, that's narrow, narrow lot right there.
That long skinny one?
Yep. Yeah, right there.
So what the state's doing is limiting access across that four lane.
Mm-hmm. Well, they're going to make it four lane. Yeah. Out there, right? And I was just wondering if he's going to develop that with, what he planned on using for a driveway? Because I was told there's no, you can't put driveways out there.
Right. And I don't know if anybody here can speak to that, sir. I think, wouldn't that put you in the driver's seat?
Well, that's just kind of what I was wondering what's going on.
I would think it would get to put you in the driver's seat.
I, I was just, I was just curious if, if that's what he meant was he's going to rezone it or building own house or other houses or storage units. I'm just wondering what he had in mind there.
Yeah, so R2, he can't do any kind of commercial.
Nothing commercial.
This would be if somebody in the future wanted to try to develop, he would have to contact the state and work out some kind of arrangement to, to develop an entrance for that.
Okay, that's all my.
Sure, you best. Thanks. Anybody else care to make public comment on this rezone application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the board for any discussion. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Roseanne Schwartz.
And she's here.
I will say this one and the next one are adjacent to each other. This is Roseanne. This will be Bruce, the next one.
Okay.
And I believe it's for potential growth, building houses, maybe?
Eventually, maybe. Uh, it's right at the end of the, I, I call it the nursing home road. And it's across, it, it used to be a dead end road that would curve around. And now there's people that live on the south side of that road. But it's, uh, roughly 100 acres that we inherited and it was divided in 25 acre lots. And who knows where housing development will go. Right now it's ag and as far as I know, it's going to stay that way or it's being farmed. But this was just the opportunity to have it changed.
Sure. Okay, and you're looking to change it to, uh, R2? Okay. Thank you. Would anybody in the audience care to make public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Any discussion for the board?
It's gravel road. That's all I'm going to say. It's a gravel road.
It's, it's a good gravel road though.
It is a good gravel road.
It's got little rumbles.
And I would think that the Schwartz would be in favor of it.
You're going to have to, so we'll, we're, um, close with Roseanne. We'll bring Bruce forward. We have to actually have two, they're two separate applications. We have to have two hearings.
But what I was saying was Mr. Schwartz would undoubtedly be in favor of Roseanne.
Bet he would.
And then he's coming next and I bet she would be in favor of his.
Although I wouldn't bet on it. I've seen.
I think in this case I would bet on it.
You're the northern lot.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so we're, we're closed on the northern lot. Now we're moving on to the, the southern lot owned by Bruce Schwartz. Same thing, RT looking to go to, um, R2. Any public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the board. Assume the same comments. We'll close this one and move on to Maureen Steffen.
Can you zoom out a little bit? That's, that's by, I'm here. She was out of town. She wasn't able to be here.
Okay.
This is another one where, you know, it's Long Deer Boulevard. It's a small lot, too small for RT. She's got a house there, you know, if, under RT, if the house is destroyed, she'd have to get a conditional use permit to rebuild it. It just makes, you know, thought it made sense to move this to R2.
What size lot is that?
Too small to even list it there. Yeah, it doesn't. Plus or minus.
One, one acre.
Yeah, it's a rated.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay, so it meets the requirements for R2.
Now, I remember seeing a drawing of this lot in the planning commission packet with dimensions on all the buildings. Was there a reason that was submitted? Were they concerned that we've got buildings too close to the lot line and R2 setbacks or anything like that?
Well, this building is, doesn't meet the setbacks, but it's free limits.
Correct, yeah. Okay, I just didn't, I wondered if there was a reason they had such a nice drawing submitted.
RT setbacks are less than, than.
No, they're the same.
Okay, they're the same.
But RT minimum is 20 meters, so.
Oh, it's not, it's not becoming less conformant, but.
No, if you change R2, it becomes more conforming. The only thing we worry about is the setbacks.
Which, which you'd have to worry about it.
Yeah, so it becomes more conforming with, and you've got the developments down here too.
Reading.
That was the reason for that one.
Okay. With that, I'd ask anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment on this to come forward. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the board for discussion. There's no comments. We will move on to Dale Weisler. Okay, what are we doing Dale?
Not too bad. Uh, when we bought this property where we built the house, the owners had plotted in different sections. And the first section sold right away. We wanted the third one, but we couldn't buy the third one unless we bought the second one. So we want to bring the second lot in appliance. We don't plan on doing anything with it. We just want to make sure it's sold right. It's just, that's all it is. It's just, uh, it was originally a six acre lot. Ours is a seven and a half. So I figured we'd just leave it, what, five or whatever it is now, so.
You own both of these lots.
Yeah, I was in both lots, yeah. 13 some acres, 13 eight or something like that. So that's all it is, is bring it in to make it right, I guess.
Sure. Thanks. Would anybody in the audience care to make a comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the board for any discussion on that. Okay, with that, we will close that line, that item. So this would be the first hearing of two. So in two weeks, we'll have the second hearing and we'll vote on all these, each lot individually. So these are technically an ordinance change, so we have to go through, uh, the hearing process for ordinance changes. So for the evening, we're done and we are going to move on to item 12.
I, I think that the budgeted CPI adjustment and then item number 13 discussed employee stipends kind of all in the same discussion.
Correct, correct. Okay, so let's kind of address those together, budgeted CPI adjustment. And then we'll kind of talk about 13 employee stipend, I guess, at the same time. But so for, for 2022, we had budgeted 1.2.
Yep, so the packet included the matrix we have this year, 2021. And then if you, if you take that, um, base and multiply it by 1.2%, you get this new matrix. So you can see the difference in the top right, the grade three step zero used to be $31,168. Then it would move to $31,542 is what that 1.2% does. So if you are an employee this year who earns a step, your step is 2% and your cost of living is one, so you're essentially getting a 3.2% raise is how that works. If you are an employee at step 12 already, you just get the 1.2% because you have limited out.
Maxed out where you can go.
In your pay scale for your job description, you have limited out. So those are, that's the difference between those two types of employees. So at the mat, last meeting, we had discussed possibly giving a stipend because inflation right now, we have not budgeted for the inflation we're seeing today. We don't know if it's going to get far worse, stay the same, maybe curve down a little bit. Who knows? I think by the time we, we talk about budget for next year, we'll have a, a much better grasp on that. So I punched some numbers. Got my big calculator out with the big buttons and looked a little bit at the salaries that we have. So I had Karen give me a list of everybody's salaries for 2021. And if I get my cheat sheet out here, excluding the commissioners, we had.
I like the way you always start with the excluding.
We're going to exclude the commissioners, so we don't have to talk about us. We're, we're simply getting the 1.2%. But the full-time payroll and right now we're short a couple of employees. So I did add them back into this as if their positions are full right now. So that puts us at 96 full-time employees at $4.69 million. So that's an average salary of $48,884. The median salary is $46,877. So on that average, six year below that average, 36 or above it. So that kind of gives you an idea of the statistics on there.
And that's that current 2021.
That's a 2021 and I felt that was the easiest to deal with right now. So if we are looking at getting, giving a flat stipend to every full-time employee of a rate, and I'm going to use 1040, $1,040. On average, that is another 2.2% on average, 2.1%. Because if you were that average employee, you would get the 1.2 CPI. If you had a step, you would get 2% there. And if you got this stipend, you'd get another 2.1, which is 5.3% on average. If you're an employee who only makes 30,000, between 30 and 35,000, we have four employees. Instead of that 2.1%, the stipend would essentially be 3.5% of your salary. So what you're doing is you're helping, technically, you're helping the lower paid employee more than you are the upper paid employee. But in my opinion, inflation hits us all very similar because we all eat food, we all have heat in our home and we all drive to work with fuel. So some of those things hit us all the same. So that is one nice thing. And when I was talking to a Union County Commissioner, he says, I hate percentage increases. He said, I'm a flat rate kind of guy because he likes to help everybody move up. And that's kind of what a stipend does here is it, is it addresses the inflation for everybody the same. So if you're an employee between 70 and 75,000, uh, that's a bad one. I'll pick 65 to 70 because we have six in that range. Instead of the 2.1 average, you'd get 1.6%. But you're already making a little more than the guy on the bottom of the pole. So you can argue pluses and minuses against that viewpoint. So essentially, if we give a stipend, we're giving a percentage raise and we're giving a flat raise to everybody. Um, and if we do go down this path, I would suggest doing it quarterly. I would pay them out in, in, uh, March, June, September and December. And then I would. And then I would prorate it on part-time hourly basis. And that ten forty, the reason I picked it is it's fifty cents an hour. So in my opinion, the part-time people, however many hours they work the first quarter, they get fifty cents an hour. They're getting the same as the full-time employee working twenty-eight.
I like the idea that it's paid out four times a year.
So then, if you get somebody, which we're trying to hire people right now for a few positions, I think we still have three open. If they don't come on until February, they would still benefit from this versus if we paid it all out in January. Then anybody who leaves takes it with them, and anybody who comes doesn't get it, so.
Well, but if they leave, they also don't get the last two, say.
If we do it quarterly, and the nice thing about quarterly is Karen only has to do it four times versus twelve if you do it monthly. So that does help her out a little bit as well. So if you want to look at my statistics, I can certainly share all that with you, but I thought fifty cents an hour for full-time pay the part-time exactly the same.
Some of the feedback I got on that was they would like it monthly, but I can understand it might be a lot of paperwork for Karen to do that, so.
And the other downside about monthly is those part-time people, there, we've got some people who only work like four hours, five hours. They pick up one shift for a paramedic or EMT, and then Karen's got to run a separate thing for if you work four hours and it's fifty cents an hour, you're getting two dollars. You know, so quarterly kind of makes more sense for those those folks there. So that would be my proposal is the ten forty. Now, if you want to talk different rates than that, we can, we can certainly scale that up pretty easy. If you want to go five hundred or fifteen hundred or whatever it is, I just picked the ten forty because I thought the fifty cents an hour.
Was easy math.
It was easy math, and it was just a starting point. So if you're looking at like our part-time folks, the majority of our part-time folks are in that fourteen to fifteen dollar range right now. And so those would be our transport folks for the jail. It would be our part-time EMT people, our part-time paramedics get paid sixteen sixty, I think, something like that. I have it written here somewhere, or maybe I left that at home. So and then we we've only got one or two people down in the twelve, twelve dollar an hour, and that would be like a part-time janitor over in the EMS building. So certainly, certainly, oh, and then at the bottom, what's this going to cost us? If we do take into account ninety-six employees, say we're full-staffed. The cost for those full-time is ninety-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Using the hours last year, when Karen calculated the seven hundred and fifty distribution to part-time. It would cost us eight thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars for part-time, so when you add it all up, it's about a hundred and eight thousand. And all of these would come out of ARPA. And that's the reason we declared all the county employees except county commissioners as essential workers.
Any thoughts on? It's we call a proposal.
I can't imagine that any employee would turn down additional monies.
I would guess not, and I think some of the concern is, we discussed at the last meeting is is this goes away after a year, inflation stays with us, then what? And I think it's, we need to be responsible to take it upon ourselves to review this at budget time and make a permanent change to the matrix for twenty twenty-three. If that's what things are looking like, would be my my thought.
I prefer a stipend over a increase based on inflation, because if inflation goes down, all of those, not that I'm saying that it will, I said, yeah. If inflation were to happen to go down. You've got people who've already budgeted that money in, and good luck.
You know, and
dealing with unhappy people when you try and take it back.
I think the goal is to, you know, if you look at a five or ten-year trend line that we're you know, we're maintaining in there and being competitive in our in our salaries. To react every year probably is not, not the wisest thing, because workplaces that did that, and you you go from a six percent increase to a zero or negative, or now all of a sudden you're on a hiring freeze because things have changed and our budget's set, and this is what people get paid, and so.
And that is a good point. I mean, a few years ago, it wasn't too long ago, I think I was working in the school system when the state came out with no raises for anybody, and I do believe the county went ahead and gave raises. So we have been trying to address that, and I think our bigger chance during this budget seizing this summer is going to be, we will probably get that three percent allowance that we're maxed for, but CPI is probably going to be five or six. So, and we're going to have to deal with that at budget time and find the dollars, and as I always say, it comes out of Mike's Highway Budget. So we're going to have to look other places, I think, too, but but we know that fight's coming, but I think right now this this helps get us through this year while we have that difficult discussion. So two things we need to do here is we do need to adopt the twenty twenty-two salary matrix. And then we we would need a separate motion if we want to give stipends, and that would be the ten forty. If if you're going on my recommendation, the ten forty for full-time and then the fifty cent an hour for part-time paid quarterly.
I move approval.
Or which one are you doing?
There's a wage matrix, and then there's like a pay matrix. Which one are we doing?
We're doing twenty-two.
County salary.
And the one question I had on that is, is we are raising the extension up.
Well, this is, this is simply the salary.
This is twenty twenty-two Yankton County salary matrix. That's why, that's why X, and we have.
The blue and pink one.
That one, yeah, so are we doing that one, or are we doing the wages?
I think you're doing the regular, the whole county matrix, not the extension.
Twenty twenty-two wages.
Wages, yes, thank you.
Were you saying something, Don?
So are you going to go ahead and make that motion, Don?
I did make it.
Okay, I will second it.
On the twenty twenty-two matrix.
The wages, salary.
We have a motion by Kettering, second by Lost, to approve the twenty twenty-two salary matrix wages as presented. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
So I move to give every full-time employee a one thousand forty dollar stipend.
Paid quarterly.
Just a minute, I'm not, I'm not done.
She took a breath so she could finish.
You want to go.
Are you going to, are we going to take it out of the ARPA funds?
Yes.
You have to, in the motion specifically say, we're going to take it out of there.
Yes. Yep, so I move to give every full-time employee one thousand, a one thousand forty dollar stipend. And every part-time employee a fifty cent per hour stipend to be paid quarterly with the funds taken out of the ARPA account.
Second.
Motion by Low, second by Fox, to approve the full-time employees of a one thousand forty dollar stipend to be paid quarterly, and part-time employees a fifty cents per hour stipend to be paid quarterly for twenty twenty-two out of ARPA funds. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
So now to the actual matrix, and during budget time. We discussed changing Danielle McFarland's job from a four to a six. She is technically in charge of that department, but her position was actually under her employee's position.
Are you looking at the pink and blue?
So that's the colored one, and if you note, the red font says extension.
Line six?
Yep, line six, so that's our extension deputy clerk.
So she was previously a four.
Four before, and during budget time, we had her budget for her to be a six. But we never actually made a motion to make to make the change.
So she supervises Katie, who's a five, so she was, she was below who she supervises, and then on top of that. Aside from just clerk duties. She's more of like a department head there, you know, has to do with that department's budget. Day-to-day, things of that nature versus you know, clerks in other positions, I guess.
Do you guys want to start in January or at her anniversary?
Well, our anniversary day, because with December. Twenty-fifth or sixth, so it would be January.
So why not just move her to a five and line, you know, make it be basically at the same rate? And the reason I ask that, since I'm already hearing grumblings from people, what, you know. You're going to hear grumblings and other people are going to want to start moving, and it's never a good idea to to mess with these things.
You know, and I I can see that point. I wouldn't say never.
I mean, that's what, that's what people don't realize, the pay is basically going to be the same. It's just the the great.
Right, and this was one that was identified long time ago. It was just after the matrix was approved, actually, and it was identified, and the plan was, you know, when when we adopted next, the twenty twenty-two, that it would be adjusted accordingly. And you're right, the pay, you know, her, her pay essentially is staying the same. With, she'll have the the one point two and the two percent increase for the step in the CPI, but something that was missed.
A six instead of like a five, I guess, if the pay's the same, then is it to be higher than that person?
That, and she was at a twelve, step twelve already, so her salary was capped. She was maxed out, and her subordinate was going to continue to make even more than her.
Her subordinate was hired above her.
But I mean, I look at, and here's the can of worms I didn't want to open up, but you know, you look at the senior paramedic is a step five, and look at the level of responsibility. Life and death decisions and the the hard work they do, and then that's lower. I mean, they're going to be the next ones coming in, and and I guess I can, I can support it at a, at a five as a, as a I don't know, like I said, I'm already here grumbling about from, from the other positions that are lower than that, so.
More discussion.
Are you making a motion, Dan?
No.
Any other thoughts on this? Like I say, we kind of discussed this at
Yeah, the pay is the same, but the appearance is what people don't realize.
Well, if it's a mistake we made back in, what was it, July or June, that we did this?
It was even longer ago, that was missed, yeah.
Whenever we did it, it should be corrected, in my opinion. I understand what Dan's saying about some, some other people might object to it. But I think it's department heads' responsibility as leaders to explain why the change is made.
And she's at a four now, right? Correct?
Correct.
I guess I'd, I'd move to put her at a step five.
Grade five, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant. And I agree, she should be making more than her, the person she supervises, but we just got to be careful that we don't. Once you start moving these, I guarantee you, within a couple of months, we're going to get two or three other people coming in and wanting to move it. Now I'll have really good reasons why. And I just don't want to, I don't want to go there.
But the answer to that, Dan, is we made it there. We missed it. But that's the answer.
I don't know if we, we necessarily, you know, made an error. The reasoning is, is that.
Do we do it on purpose? I guess I wasn't there.
The reasoning is that, you know, all of our employees work hard and we appreciate them all, but the reasoning for this move is because she was lower than the person she supervises. And if we move them where they're, you know, equally, that that'll rectify the situation without, in my opinion, disrupting the matrix. Because if we start jumping people up two spots. It's, it's not going to go well.
Is there anybody else in the county that supervises somebody that is be, is on the same or higher pay scale?
I mean, okay, I'll look at our senior paramedic. Do you think his job was less important?
That's not what I.
But I'm, but that's what I'm asking you, and that's how the employees see it when you start messing with this, and I'm trying to do it in the least intrusive way. Because people are paying attention, and and we we went through this, and I just don't want the feelings of unfairness to come, which I I think that this is going to cause that. That's the point I'm getting at, so.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second. To justify.
And just for clarity. Have to figure out the step, but the step would be the step of the similar pay grade.
Yeah, yes, exactly. We, we don't want her to make less money. We want her to be making more money than than the person she supervises, or we, we, of course, you know, we don't want her to lose any, any of that.
Are we in discussion? Yes, we are.
The question we're, we've been talking about is pay some, and, and I, but are the responsibilities of the position, did they match a five or a six?
I think you could, that's the question, right, is are the responsibilities those of a five or a six?
Well, they, they, you know, were, were four, jumping up.
Well, we, we made it a four, though. You know, I mean, to be fair, it wasn't a four until we said it was a four.
I'm not, you know, it's a, it's a crucial position. It's important with the county.
Any more discussion on that? With that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, now she is going up step. She was a four and to a five.
Correct.
Grade, grade.
Grade, grade four.
Five, and we'll figure out what step she's at.
Okay.
Because we have to approve the salaries at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Onto item fourteen, job descriptions.
So these are the ones that have been turned in so far. It's a new format developed. Probably the biggest addition was the lifting, and let me get to that here. So I can just pull one of these up. Yeah, the template, yeah, the physical requirements, that wasn't on there before on all of them. So we tried to get it so they all looked the same or similar. In there, we don't have to approve all of these tonight, but this is what's been developed so far. There are some big departments that have some unique, like the highway, they have very detailed job descriptions based on the state. And then the sheriff and jail have some unique job descriptions as well, and. Excuse me, I need to get with those two departments to see if they're, they're going to adapt to this or not. So what's been provided so far, I don't know if you went through all of them or whatnot. Have any questions, any concerns, anything missing that needs to be included?
The only thing, when I pull up Deputy State's Attorney and Chief Deputy State's Attorney, it pulls up as the same one. And even though there is differences in there, I guess, it's up at the position title there. The, the descriptions look really good, it's just what it's labeled as.
Sorry, say that again, Dan?
So when you, when you click on Chief Deputy State's Attorney, the position title says Deputy State's Attorney, probably should say Chief Deputy State's Attorney.
It says chief.
I'm just chief.
Maybe mine isn't pulling it up, but. Okay.
Yeah.
No. Mine's being difficult, but it's still pulling up that way, and then maybe that's my computer, but the rest of it looks good.
Was that fixed or some? Yeah, okay, that's why I wondered. Cause yeah, mine pulls.
I got my tabs all open.
So the treasure is not here, is the BSO here?
Why, mine aren't there either?
Yep, so there's just a few, few departments still to include in this, so like I said, we don't have to approve them tonight. But I wanted to get it in front of you. Before we get completely down the path and then everybody says, oh, well, what about this? And we gotta add it to 50 of them versus a few.
So, yeah, with that, I would suggest we do them all. Under one motion at the same time, so we'll give some time, people can look through these more.
Okay.
Are we gonna have the HR people look at it, that, those ones we contracted with? It might be worthwhile, you know, to have them look over these. The way everything is anymore, I just don't wanna take it for granted, I'm sure we're doing it the right way, but they're the experts and. If it's reasonably priced, it might be wise for them to look it over.
So what I'll do is, when we have Training Day, is that the 24th, it's on a Monday. I will run that by the lady who's here, just to have her glance at one, say, are we covering everything?
Great.
That work?
Yeah, yeah, I just, it, now would be the time to do it.
Correct. Anything else on job descriptions? Okay, that, we'll move on to public comments, does anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Yep. Come on up.
Okay, my name's Matt Evans. One of the things that was said earlier was that it has been Ryan's property for 40 years. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's possible, I'm not always right.
I'm gonna stop you for a second.
Yep.
Just, just for a public comment, just general public comment, not to really address anything that was in the meeting.
So, on all my previous meetings that I've had with lakes and whatever else, they've talked before and after, and that was allowed.
What do you mean?
Like, they talked about my lake property before and after when I had that rezoned.
Yeah, typically, the intent of gen, of, of the. Public comment, your public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken.
Okay, it says of any, what was that at the beginning, of anything? I don't remember exactly what you said.
Any subject.
So is there a part in there that restricts me, it's just?
No, I, so in, in the entirety though, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this until it's specifically included in the agenda item. Each person has three minutes, there should be no personal attacks against members of the body, county staff, individual or organizations. Jared has the authority to enforce his policy, failure to adhere to these rules may result in the forfeit of the remaining speaking time. And I guess the point I'm making is if that's specific to a, an agenda item. I think it's best to make it during the agenda item comment.
Does it say in there that I'm not allowed to talk about it?
Nope, I'm just saying it's, in my opinion, a better time during the agenda item time, because it's gonna be reflected in the minutes.
I agree, I think that my time is very limited with the three minutes. And I feel I'm gonna have a lot more to say the next meeting and the next meeting after. There have been times with like the lake property where I didn't feel it was fair, but I don't, I don't do this. But I, there were people who. Came up and did not speak and forfeited their three minutes to someone else. I don't feel like I morally want to do that, I feel like I should be able to get my three minutes talking to you guys. I guess, and I didn't see anything in the rules against it.
Nope, nope, it's not, I, it's just that if it's specific to an agenda item, but I'll, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so one of the things that was said. Was that it's been the, the Heine's property for years. Forty years, and property rights. Don't change. If they keep doing the same thing, if I, if I remember right, if they change a certain percentage of their property. Then that's when the zoning changes, if I remember right. Like. I don't remember what the exact percentage is. They, from what I know, they could have kept doing what they're doing. Farming, whatever they've been doing, cows or whatever, as long as they didn't change a certain percentage of that. If you do change a certain percentage of that. You do lose that right. Like, even people with houses that burned so much down, they can't build that house back up. He made the choice by building what he built on there. To lose that right. And then they sell their property to somebody who sells it to me, and I spend millions of dollars next to it. Imagine even being those houses to the south, and then you spend the money, which people already have spent the money to the south on those houses. And then these cows are literally in your backyard, 25 feet away, mooing away or whatever's allowed there, manure spreading, whatever's allowed. That's not fair, like. One of the things that was said was, well, who was there first? And it's like, I don't feel that's fair, just because he was there first and he sold the land to me. He can rezone it as a factory or whatever and put that next to me, that's not how that works. Imagine your guys' home, you know, like, you know, the home that you're living in right now. It's zoned all residential around you, or ag, whatever it is. And then they put a factory in ag right behind your house, oh, well, they owned it longer than you, so they were there first. That, that's not fair, you know, I spent so much money on this in my life. I quit my dad's shop at 22 years for this. I have no problem with Ryan's hops, I think it's great, I have no problem with his bands, it's great selling beer, it's great. Great for our community, but putting ag in there. It, it's just, it does not fit. I'll just stop at that, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. And I'll bring it to Commissioner Updates. Jerry, I don't know, you got one?
Am I supposed to have? I do, I do, I did set up a meeting this, this coming week here on Thursday to talk to the West 11 folks about paving.
Okay.
So I think five of them are gonna come in, we're gonna sit down and just chit chat about. What they're willing to do.
You said about paving?
Yes, their request to pave.
I think they requested to pave, I thought they were looking for answers.
Chip seal, I think, but.
Yeah.
Well.
Fix the road, but. Well, it's gonna be paving, I guess.
I think they're looking at all options, but their request was, what would it take to make hard surface?
So we're gonna sit down and talk about the, the laws that are available and how much those laws would cost.
Okay.
And I think, I think it's important to address with them when and how it's expected to be paid for, if they're.
Correct.
If they're gonna pay for it, because there are a number of people on that list of 37 that likely are not gonna pay. Six or $10,000 upfront.
Correct, yes.
If we don't do it upfront, it's not fair to the rest of the citizens.
And that's the bulk of the conversation right there, so absolutely.
Correct.
You're not, you're just talking about getting fixed, not paving it and turn it over to the county, or what?
We can't give, that road, we cannot give up jurisdiction on that road. There's a state law that says we cannot give up jurisdiction.
I just, you know, like, we pave one road, we're gonna be paving.
Well, and that's what we talked about at the last meeting, and we had that whole discussion. And, but the thing is, I promised I would sit down with these folks. And I, I certainly am not guaranteeing they're gonna have chip seal next year. I'm not guaranteeing they're gonna ever have chip seal, but we need to sit down and talk about what they are willing to do. And bring it back and see what the county is willing to do.
It, it's a difficult challenge, because even if we, I guess, because I live on that road. If we would all chip in and pay for it to be chipped, who maintains it? Because it's likely gonna be chip sealed again in two years. Or three years, and that's, that's another 30, $40,000.
And we'll have that discussion with whatever comes back, any other Commissioner Updates?
I told you guys, I'm on the, the National Association Board for Veterans Affairs and been asked to attend a conference in July. And from what I understand, it's. It's in Colorado. What is the board's feeling on me attending that?
This is Commissioner Updates.
Well, I, I know, I know, I'm just putting it out there, not asking for anything, if the answer's no, I'll, I'll tell them right now, but I've been asked to attend that, so.
Why don't you send some information to everybody on it, and then we can put it on the agenda, maybe? Any other updates? Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for poor relief. Issues pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2 and 28-13 and 28-13-1.3.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now in executive session.
Microphones.
Okay, microphones on, please.
So I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion to come out of executive session, further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, we are now out of executive session into regular session.
So I make a motion to pay file 22-002/21-097 based on. SDCL 28131.1.
Second.
Motion to pay claim 22-02. Slash 21-097. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Motion to pen the files of CW 22-001 through CW 22-018 excluding 22-002. Based on the following SDCLs, 28-1334.2, 28-1333-2, 28-13-3, 28-13-1.3, subpart 1, 28-13-1. And 28-13276A.
Second.
Motion to pen files as presented by Lost, second by Fox, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any items for the next meeting?
And we're gonna get the email sent out to us group.
Yes.
With the information.
So yeah, we'll have executive session, we're gonna have the rezone.
Number of rezonings.
Exec litigation. Okay.
Two more in addition to those two?
We're gonna reach our 10.
No, we'll have eight so far, what?
Okay. That I'd enter.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Quarterly reports.
Those will take a while.
So on behalf of the agenda next meeting. That I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.